It is October 19th at 5:35 and tonight we have a public hearing and budget discussion after that. So before we get started, for those that may not know who we are, I would like the board to introduce ourselves. For the new people joining, my name is Mary Ann Ashley. I am the town supervisor. Karen?
Karen Blackburn, Town Council member.
Bob Washo, Town Board.
Jim?
Dana Heaton, Board.
Okay, and Jim?
Let's see if he can, I don't know if he can unmute himself.
Heidi, could you?
Yeah.
Jim, would you like to introduce yourself, please?
Jim Smith, Town Board.
Okay, we also have Deputy Clerk Heidi Smith with us, John Gray, our accountant. And welcome to Ellis, Adam, Toby, Susan Huntley is my confidential secretary, bookkeeper, and Linda Kessler is our historian. So welcome, everybody. So I'm going to open the public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Town Board of the Town of Canton will hold a public hearing, a special board meeting on October 19th at 5:30 PM for the purposes, for the purpose of considering a local law to override the limit on the amount of real property taxes that may be levied by the Town of Canton, County of St. Lawrence pursuant to general municipal law 3C and to allow the Town of Canton, County of St. Lawrence to adopt a town budget for A, town purposes, B, fire protection districts, and C, any other special or improvement district governed by the Town Board for the fiscal year 2021 that requires a real property tax levy in excess of the tax levy limit as defined by general municipal law 3D. A copy of the proposed law was on the website as well. It basically says the same thing that I had just read. So let me just look at this last part here. So just a little background information, we have been working on the town budget for quite a bit now and the proposed budget was within the tax cap. We did not go over the tax cap. However, the board at our last session felt that this was something that we might want to consider and discuss if needed. So that's why we're here tonight for that purpose, for the public hearing. Does any board member want to add to what I've already said?
This is Bob. For me, at this point, I think it's a useful exercise to go through this and have the tool in our toolbox. Should we need it? It's not looking like we're going to need to, but it's a necessary step in the process should it need to be employed. So I see it as a necessary formality.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Any other board member? Okay, so at this time, I am opening it up to public comment and if you would like to say something, if you would please identify yourself and we're here to listen. So is there any public comment? Andy, would you like?
Okay, I just saw this in the paper and it kind of just concerned me a little bit that we were trying to go over the state cap, state property tax cap. Sounds like you're not trying to do that, but you're trying to propose a law that would allow you to do that in the future if need be. Is there a reason that you would think you'd ever have to go over the property tax cap and why? I guess I'm just concerned that, you know.
I'll speak to that briefly. It's a year-to-year approval. This isn't, once we, if this is adopted by the board, it's only good for this fiscal year. It would expire and if we didn't use it, we would need to rescind the law. It's a step that the state requires should you end up needing to use it. Like I said earlier, I don't anticipate us using it, but it's not there as an option should we need to employ it. And the reason why it might need to get used this year, or in future years, is a pretty big unknown about revenues from the state or elsewhere. It's certainly not my goal to raise property taxes over the tax cap, but it's a tool.
I guess from a taxpayer perspective, I mean, we're, we have a lot of fixed income people here. I run a business, I have a farm and I really can't change the way things are right now. So to raise our property taxes would, it wouldn't devastate us, but I would, you know, it's not something I'm looking forward to. So I guess I would just recommend doing everything in your power as the board and supervisor and, you know, elected officials to try to do your best to, you know.
Keep it in the budget.
Yeah, find creative ways to make sure our budget is met and that we don't go over the state cap. So that's my opinion. I don't see many other, you know, community members here, so must be I'm the only one that's that way, but.
You're not the only, like Bob said, we all think, none of us are planning at this point that we may have to, but we'd be remiss to not have this tool available in our toolbox. And we still have another month or so, I think, before we have to pass the budget. So we just want to have the tool in our toolbox. As of now, we have, you know, there's no intention in our proposed budget to override the cap.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, excuse me, Bob. Did you want to add?
I was just going to thank Andy for coming to speak up.
Um, absolutely. Thank you for your input. I also did hear from another community member and she feels the same, that, you know, we need to stay within our means of the tax cap and not raise taxes. And go over, just a little bit of history, the tax cap when it was first created was 2%. Well, now because of the different formulas and the the way the state does business, it's now down to 1.56%. So that even confines us a little bit more, but I think we've done a good job as a board going through this process, which hasn't been easy because of the COVID and the loss of the revenues that we've already experienced. We've done a very good job with that, but I concur with my fellow members that, you know, we don't anticipate doing it. But this is a good exercise that we should do every year in case. Is there any other public comment? Toby, hi.
Hi there. Thanks for your comments about the necessity or not to use this law. Would it be something that in the middle of the year, if there were some sort of further erosion of state funding or what have you, that this law could allow you to go back and review the budget and propose changes at that time, mid-year?
I don't believe so. You know, this is the process when towns are building their budgets. There's certain timelines and, you know, that you have to follow, you know, to get it to the county for the tax warrant and that type of thing. I don't believe that we would have the ability to create, you know, pass the law in midstream and then move forward. The board could certainly consider, if there is a dire need of something, to amend the budget midstream, but we would have to find the revenue to do that. Maybe other board.
Yeah, I think amending the budget would look like taking money out of fund balance to come up with shortfalls or bonding or some sort of other creative lending option. But once the budget is approved, if we choose to pass this law tonight or whenever, we will have, also have to pass a subsequent law to rescind it once our budget is passed. It's not something we hold as a wild card in our back pocket for the fiscal year. Once the budget is adopted, the law goes away and we deal with the budget that we adopted.
I understand. Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you, Toby. Okay, is there any further public comment? So we have a few options. The board can decide. We can choose to add it to the agenda right now and take action as to whether we want to pass this law or we can add it to our next public hearing as an agenda item. What would the board like to do?
I think we have to. I don't care. Did we close the public hearing?
Not yet, actually. Not yet. I can officially close the public hearing if there's no more further public comment. Okay, so Heidi, I'm closing the public hearing at 5:46 PM. Jim, did you want to? You're welcome, Andy. Thank you for joining us.
Yes.
You too. I mean, I, I mean, we have the information. We know how we feel. I have no problem adding it to the agenda for tonight. Is anyone else?
I don't have a problem.
Karen, are you good with adding it tonight? Jim?
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to talk about budget now, I think by the time the night's over, we're going to, we're going to know whether we're going to need to override it or not.
Okay, so you want to add it on after the budget discussion?
Yeah, if by the time, if by the time we get done with this budget session, we say, oh gracious, we're going to be over the tax cap, then I think we're going to have to approve overriding the tax cap. But like I said, I don't see that that's going to happen. So it may, may, maybe something that we don't even need to use.
Well, I think we still need to consider passing it because we're still dealing with guesses on some of our revenue sources right up until.
Well, yeah, right up until, I mean, we, right up to our public hearing on the actual budget. So, I mean, we can go ahead. If we're going, we've had the public hearing, if we're going to pass it, we can, let's do it right now then. Just do it. That's all the way. We'll go on with our budget.
Let's add it, let's add it for after our discussion, just to see if anything comes up during our discussion that may affect us.
Okay, so we'll add it onto the agenda. So the next step is I'm going to call the regular meeting to order at 5:49 PM. And the one item, well, now we have two items on the agenda, the 2021 budget discussion and then the consider passing the local law to override the tax levy. Okay. So we did get a recommendation for some change from the highway department, the highway committee. Would either Bob or Jim like to speak to those recommended changes?
Well, I mean, it's pretty, pretty straightforward. Do you have them in front of you, Mary Ann?
I do. Would you like me to read them?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So the highway committee would like to make the following budget recommendations. In the A account, remove the $10,000 sales tax revenue and utilize increased tax revenue within the A account. We can raise the rate by three cents from 275 to 278. And that would bring, well, what, I'll just finish this and then I'll tell you what we did. The next recommendation is the DB account, increase sales tax revenue by 77,000 over the proposed amount, 52,000 to make up for the shortfall and another 25,000 in contingency for the Main Street grant obligation seed money. Under sales tax, the committee wrote, the 2020 approved budget was 831,566. The anticipated revenue for 2020, based on money in hand and recent additional county data that I believe the committee called the county on is 900,000. And then the proposed revenue for 2021 would be 758. So the highway committee proposes increasing sales tax revenue to 832, 832,000 on par with last year, but under the 2020 anticipated revenues. This will still keep us at a conservative estimate by historical standards.
And what I meant by that was typically we set that income based on the previous years. The recommendation is still at 832 has us considerably lower than what we expect to yield from sales tax.
And from our, oh, excuse me, from our last session, you know, we were directed to cut that down to 10%, by 10%, but I just wanted to mention that. Okay, so when we were looking at this, and Tim, you came in last week and asked, what is the maximum amount of levy could we go to without going over the tax cap? And I indicated to you that we could go up to 1,084,164. My proposed budget was 1,066,964. So that would give us a difference of $71,90 to work with. So if we took the $10,000 out of the A fund for the sales tax, we would have $7,190 of spending that we could increase within the A fund. And this is my recommendation.
But wait, really? You're taking revenue out, you're saying?
You have to offset, because of the tax cap, if we increase it to the 1,084,164, okay, that's a difference of $17,190.
Okay.
Okay, so we did, we have to decrease, when we're decreasing the revenue, well, actually, we're having an increase of 7190 so we can put more expenditures in, in the A fund.
Well.
So, because we, we have to, we, our ultimate goal, right, is to have balanced funds. And so in order to do that with the A fund, and if we want to raise the levy up to the maximum of the tax cap, we would have that additional money.
Yeah, but we wouldn't be using that just in A. We're basically, so let's just slow down a minute. We're saying we're going to take out 10,000 of sales tax that shouldn't be in A and put it in DB, correct?
Yes.
That, that, without doing anything else, leaves a $10,000 shortfall in A.
If we keep the same 1,066 that I proposed, but if you, if we raise it up to the maximum tax cap, there's an additional 17,190.
But wouldn't.
Saying as far as the property tax.
But if it went from the 275 to, to added three cents to 278, that'll generate about that 10,000, a little over that 10,000 that would be needed to balance that. Is that correct? You wouldn't have to go all the way to the, all the way to the max. Because isn't it like, it's like 38, is it 3800 dollars, something like that for a penny?
And that's what we proposed, the three cent, not to go up to the max, but just go from 275 to 278 to make up that 10,000.
Okay.
And then, and then use fund balance to balance DB.
Okay, so I guess that's, that's a conversation for the board. Do we want, do we want to, you know, increase it so that it's only a three cent increase or do we want to use the maximum amount as, as Tim was looking at and just zero it out?
And so what does that take it to from 275 up to what then?
It's on the chart, Mary Ann. So just, just to be clear, we don't set a tax rate. We set a tax levy and the tax rate is determined from that, but obviously we can, it's directly correlated. The tax cap dictates our maximum tax levy, which would be the 1,084,164. And that would take the rate to 27943, 27943048 to be specific. So be a little bit under that. My, my thought is that, you know, the tax cap is fairly restrictive. And when every, every little bit that we're under in any year, I just mag, it rolls over to next year and the year after that, the year after that. You know, I'm thinking, I'm thinking ahead a little bit in terms of trying to get the revenue we can get now and position ourselves, hopefully to not have to raise it next year. I think the room we have under the cap, we should utilize.
I did not calculate the 2.78.
I mean, I think that, that's fine. I, I think we said 278 because I got it covered, covered what we are, the shortcomings that we had, but if you're, if you want to take it up another penny, I mean, it's not going to make or break me. So I, I mean.
The one advantage, I went through the different tax cap submissions. Oh, I don't know, maybe back five years and, you know, if there is a rollover, it is to our advantage each year. So to have that flexibility, I could go either way. If I could, if I can just finish some recommendations for the 70, if we go to the maximum and there's 7,190 left, if I could just go through a few recommendations for the board to consider and then that might help as well. Um, so what we discovered is we were notified that the retirement system has gone up a little bit. And it was another unexpected issue that we did not calculate in. So there's about a $4,000 need there to go into the retirement system. So I would recommend that we take the 71, we max out the, the tax cap and out of the 7190, we take $4,000 of that and apply it to the retirement. And then what I would do is I would add $2,000 to the highway administrative. Because what they need down there is a couple filing cabinets that are fireproof for critical records. And then I would increase the court contractual by $1,190 because they always seem to be coming up short. We did not give them their full request. And then that would take care of the 7190. So those were three areas that we could utilize that money. And Susan's on as well. So I'm going to ask Susan if you have anything to add to that.
I don't have anything to add.
Okay. So as far as, you know, down that highway, those filing cabinets are in pretty rough shape and they're not fireproof and they're not lock proof. So this would allow for them to get, become more secure down there as far as records. And then the recommendation is, as we have already talked about, to take the DB deficit out of fund balance.
I thought we were increasing sales tax to take care of.
Yes. Yeah, we recommended sale, increase sales tax.
I apologize. Okay. So then if we do that, you should have a balanced budget.
Well, I also, I did write in an email today, I wanted to reconsider what's going on in the historian's office. I'd like to see if we couldn't, can't be creative. You know, Rachel's been a pretty valued employee and like I said in my email with COVID, it's really took the volunteers in that office of taking a big hit. And I think our, our share of Rachel's pay is only $1,500 with the village paying the other half. So I'd like to see if we can't figure out a way to make that work.
Actually, Bob, I took your recommendation and I ran some numbers and if that position was put back in with the 1% pay increase and then along with all the benefits, the total will be around 4,100. So.
What benefits?
Um.
Per, you mean?
The social security.
Okay, yeah, all right. So.
So the.
Not, not benefits.
Well.
Intangible.
Retirement, retirement and social security, those taxes. So it would be around 4,100, which half is paid by the village. So we would just have to, you know, do a final write-up on that, but it's, it's, it's around 4,100, 4,200.
Well, I mean, at a time, we committed so far at least to give a 1% raise to everyone at a time where we're considering letting somebody go. So I think keeping jobs is just as important as giving raises as far as taking care of people. And I don't know, Linda, you're on here. How long, how long has Rachel been working for the town?
Mute myself. Okay, seven and a half years. Only three or four years was she ever paid. I paid her one year out of my own pocket, 100.
Is there room in your contractual, Linda, to, to, to some wiggle room?
And I don't even need a raise if I can keep Rachel. And Rachel probably would appreciate keeping her job without a raise. I value that office enough where we both don't need a raise.
I, I mean, I think if we could use the contractual to do this without affecting the overall budget, I'd be strongly in favor of that.
Because are we keeping the $1,000 in our budget for conferences and stuff? I think I talked to Mary Ann about putting that $1,000 into Rachel.
I think that there was two in contractual and one in.
No, I can tell you exactly what the contractual is. It's 3,500. And then the staff development is 1,000 for the historian's budget.
So I'd say we come up with our half of Rachel out of those two lines and, and, and have some, and, as a way to just to supplement the lack of the volunteers. I mean, I don't know if you keep track, Linda, of how many hours of volunteer that you have lost due to COVID, but I mean, we have to be in the hundreds of hours that we are now in a deficit there that.
It was hours a week.
So.
And I lost. And that's why I was able to produce so much work and Rachel still produces so much work.
So I said my piece.
Yep, I don't need a raise. Rachel doesn't need a raise. You'd like to keep her job. Yep, I don't need a raise. Rachel doesn't need a raise. She'd like to keep her job. See, I still don't understand the benefits part. Because I did talk to Sally and they put money in for Rachel's pay. So will the benefits come along with that half of the benefits or whatever they're called?
All all costs, all costs are split fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty. They don't just give us the money. We bill them after we spend it. Yeah, yeah.
And that will go to June. And then we put our budget in while we're doing that now.
Yeah, we just have a contractual agreement that they pay fifty percent of the costs. So, yeah, um.
But she brings home a hundred and eleven dollars every two. And she loves her job.
I I mean, all we're talking about is moving money around within the department. We're not talking about spending anything extra.
Jimmy was. So the board. So we need to come up with about twenty-two hundred dollars. So Linda, you're saying you give up your staff development?
Oh, yeah. We're not going to meet next year.
And then contractual, um, twelve hundred dollars less?
Yeah, thirteen hundred, yes. Because that contractual with the.
That covers your phone.
Yeah, nine eighty-nine dollars a month, which is not just my phone.
It's about a thousand dollars for the year. But then you have you would have a little bit of a little bit of money there to do your other, um, things that you normally do.
Yes.
Yeah. Because we did take the, um, copier out. Now we have one line item. As well.
Yep.
I just I just I just I just hate to see part-timers, anybody lose their job, especially part-timers who have are figuring out a way to work multiple jobs and make it work and get through month to month. A loss of a hundred and eleven dollars every two weeks is could be detriment, could be a big problem for somebody. So
he works.
If we could avoid it, we should.
Aaron, Tim, or Jim?
Well, if we're gonna if we're gonna do this, my only comment would be, uh, even though you said it, uh, Linda, uh, if if we're planning on doing one percent pay increases, then you're getting the one percent and Rachel's getting one percent. You know, it's it's it's, you know, it everybody, let's let's keep everybody, you know, where they're supposed to be. We can't afford, uh, forty-one dollars extra for Rachel for a one percent increase or, you know, which is twenty bucks to us. And whatever your pay increase is, you know, it's if we're going to pay people one percent increase, everybody's get I like, I want to see everybody get the one percent increase. That's funny. Eligible for.
I agree.
I agree with Bob and Jim. Let's move forward with the plan.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, so we'll add that back in and, um, you know, calculate everything. Um.
Oh, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Linda.
Wait until I write next month who came in today.
Okay.
He was born in Edson Martin's beer plant. They lived in the apartment upstairs.
That's a great story. It was good to meet him. Okay, um. John, did you have anything you wanted to add? Oh.
No, thank you. I have nothing else.
Okay. So it sounds like we have a plan with all those action steps. And so the next thing is tomorrow morning, we'll be crunching numbers. I'm sorry. Oh. Was that Linda or Tim? Okay.
Well, I mean, it sounds like we've worked through some things, but according, you know, per the discussion today, I think we need to revisit recreation. You know, if we're if we're willing to look at better numbers for sales tax, then we need to revisit the the twenty-five percent cut this proposal for recreation. And I know we're kind of balanced with where we are right now, but there's still that line item that's taking a huge hit. And the impacts of that are unknown, given that we're in a time where we're trying to reimagine our recreation model. But if our cut is matched by the village, that's going to completely kneecap us in terms of that process. You know, I'd love to be able to sit here and tell the board exactly what the impacts of cutting that in recreation could be, but I can't because we don't know what our model is going to be. And I also can't because I'm not willing as a member of the recreation committee to to say that. That's like me, you know, I'm not going to ask Bob and Jim, okay, if I cut, you know, fifty twenty thousand dollars from highway, tell me exactly which piece of road is not going to get paved next year. We don't know that. We don't know what's going to get washed out over the course of the winter. So, you know, if we're if we're dealing with less than worst case scenario numbers here, I'm not willing to just sit there and let recreation get cut down to a hundred thousand dollars. We got to revisit it. And if that means we go into fund balance to do that, then that's what it means, you know? This fund balance is there for the rainy day and it's pretty cloudy right now. So I'm hoping we can talk about it and find a number where we can have a little bit more comfort than going all the way down to a hundred. Karen, do you want to jump in?
Yeah, we just need to be prepared. So when we have a plan in place that there, you know, whether it's hiring a new director or not, um, whatever the new model is, we need to be, you know, we need to be prepared. We need to have money in that line item.
Is your recommendation from the committee to put it all all back in?
Our recommendation is to have a discussion as the board and find a number where we're comfortable. We know.
Can we do that tonight?
I think we have to do that tonight.
Yeah.
What's the what's the number?
I mean, I was looking through, you know, we were at, we were actually at, I'm not sure how it happened, but we were actually at one thirty-six on the two thousand nineteen budget and some, I don't remember us going down from one thirty-six to one thirty-two for last year. You know.
Remember, we we made that agreement to pay to pay for the, um, pavilion floor.
That's a separate item.
Look at that.
That's a completely separate budget item. You know, I think we were at, we were at one twenty-two. Might have been in two thousand eighteen. I don't have those numbers handy right now. You know, I just going to to from one thirty-two to one twenty or so would be about a ten percent cut. And that's, you know, significant, but it's a lot less painful than going to a hundred would be, especially if the village is decides they're going to match, you know, match our cut instead of trying to stay the same or even make up some of the revenue shortfall.
One of one of the things for me is I I wish we would have had a joint meeting in September as we requested. Um, it went to committee. Um, I I, we all know that we don't have a written agreement. So when we budget something, uh, for recreation, you know, we're committed to that amount. Um, so I'm wondering would it make sense to maybe put an amount in a contingency based upon any from the, um, from the committee? And then if the money is needed, we could certainly use that. Um, just an idea I threw one out.
That was going to be my recommendation, uh, in because of the unknown and because we haven't had opportunity to meet. If we take twenty thousand and put it in contingency account in in B and balance that with fund balance, um, to make it balanced, uh, it's there when we have all of our meetings and we decide if we do have a rec, uh, a a direction for recreation and we find that that's going to be necessary, then as a board, we can agree to transfer that to rec. But if not, it'll just return to the fund balance where we took it from.
Yeah, I I don't I I don't disagree. I I let's, I think if we keep it at a hundred and put thirty-two in contingency, similar to how the highway department is putting in fifty thousand in contingency, um, with similar reasoning, it sounds like, um, the best of both worlds.
So Jim, Jim, you had said twenty. Bob, you said thirty-two.
Well, whatever, you know, when I asked the question when we first met over the budget, why we landed on a hundred, I think the answer I got was because it's a round number. Let's just keep it at the round number.
One twenty?
No, a hundred, what you have it at.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then put the thirty-two and change in contingency.
I think I think we'd be very happy with it. Again, there's there's so many things on the table right now with rec. I can't. You know, we 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 think we can find some new ways of doing things and we just need the time to let that play out. And I think this strategy gives us the flexibility to do that. At some point, we're going to, we're going to be coming back to the boards and say, is this something that looks like a worthwhile use of our taxpayer resources, whether, you know, whether twenty twenty-one budget dollars or whether uh, fund balance? And if the board says it is, then those funds will be allocated. Or as it's not, then we'll go back to the drawing board.
Well, and and I I think as we're thinking about new models, and if this is truly a joint rec effort, um, maybe keeping more of the money in contingency year to year is the way to go because then it maybe gives us more oversight as to how money is spent instead of just paying the bill without knowing where the money is going.
I I, I'm sorry, Jim, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I I was going to say that I I I agree with, I'll agree with putting the thirty-two thousand in there, but it's being my feeling is being put in there and but it's not so that uh, everybody can look at that and say, okay, the town, okay, the town is actually funding the one thirty-two. We just got, you know, when we need it, we can go after it. Uh, I won't vote. I'm I'd probably lose, but it doesn't matter. But I'm just gonna say I won't vote to transfer any of that out of contingency until I see what that new model is going to be for recreation for the town and village camp. So I think that's something that has to, you know, it's going to be in there. And if that model shows that this is what it's going to be required to fund recreation, so be it. I'll have an opportunity to say my piece. I'll have an opportunity to vote on it. But this thirty-two that I'm agreeing to put in the contingency account, it's not being put in there because when we need it, we're just going to fund rec. It's I I'm I'm putting it there with the idea in mind that from today forward, hopefully by, you know, April, we've come up with a plan on how to to provide recreation for town and village camp. Right now, we have nothing, as far as I'm concerned.
Jim, we wouldn't ask you to vote on how much to put toward towards rec without a plan in place. And it's such a delicate situation right now that we can't rush into making decisions. Um, and we will absolutely do it in the most, um, cost-effective way. You know, it's not our plan to go after that thirty-two thousand, you know, everything that we're talking about and everything that we're doing is to ensure that it's good for the community. Um, you know, and that it's cost-effective. So thank you for your thoughts there. I just wanted you to know the the vision and mission of the the committee moving forward.
I know I and and if you misunderstood.
No, no.
I spoke wrong, but I know I know what, I know you under you and Tim, uh, I I know that you understand what we're talking about here. What I'm saying, this is a public meeting and and I don't want the perception to be that, oh, well, okay, they're going to fund, uh, recreation a hundred percent. That's that's not what my idea is. And my idea is to be able to have some extra funding there should that new model, when we come up with it, is if it needs that funding, it's there. Now, I I wasn't, I wasn't questioning, you know, the you, Karen, on it on it at all. So.
No, no. And with it being a public meeting, I just wanted that out there as well. So.
Okay.
Great conversation, Jim.
No, that's a healthy conversation. I just want to add, so, uh, we had one thirty-two, two oh one. So what I'm hearing is we would put thirty-two, two oh one in a contingency line item under parks and rec and take it out of fund balance.
No, just just in contingency in the account, not under any other heading.
Well, it would be on well, where in B would you want the contingency?
Can it just be in general somehow?
We have special items. We have a special items line item that we had in B seventy-one thousand, five hundred. And then we put that down to zero. You want the thirty-two, two oh one to go in the special items or under parks and rec?
Create, can't we, it should, uh, every, every, every account should be able to have a contingency account. Maybe we just never had one in B because we always funded B with with sales tax and never really put it in there. But I can't, why can't we just create a line with an account number?
Actually, we have that, or Jim, we have, we have a contingent in this year's budget. We have a contingency account of seventy-one thousand, five hundred. The proposal is just to delete, to have that be zero. But what I'm saying is put the thirty-two, two oh one in that line item. It wouldn't be under parks and rec. It would just be under B nineteen hundred, nineteen ninety.
Correct, 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 correct.
So, yep, all right.
Everybody good with that, putting it there?
Yeah. So so hold on, I knew, when did we get rid of that seventy-one thousand, five hundred?
We have, well, in my proposed budget, we just took, it's on page fifteen of forty-one. Under expenditures. Nineteen nineteen ninety-four.
Is the seventy, I'm getting, the seventy-one thousand, five hundred is present in the last version I'm looking at. Is that gone and now in the new revision?
And then the proposed budget, we put it to zero. We haven't used that, um, this year. But it.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm looking, I'm looking at, okay, I'm looking at last year. I'm looking at twenty.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
So if I.
I mean, I guess, so I guess the question is, do we put, do we put this contingent item specific to recreation and parks? Or do we just add a general B contingency line?
That was my original thing. Do we put a contingency line item in parks and rec? Or do you want to put it under special items?
I agree with Jim in just making it a general contingency account.
I agree as well.
It didn't be where it shouldn't be where it needs to be. And if and and if we if if we need it, it's there for wherever we need it for.
What does it matter? I mean, if it go, sorry for the question here, but what does it matter if it goes into parks and rec?
It might, we we, it might, it's a little bit more difficult to move money around when it's allocated more specifically.
So you think that thirty-two might need to be used elsewhere other than?
If rec doesn't need it ultimately, potentially, or it could go back into fund balance. I mean.
Okay. I was just trying to better understand.
It keeps it, it keeps it the most flexible, I would say. And and does it make it look out of like it's an automatic part of the rec budget? I think part of it is opt, part of it, part of it is optical for the public.
For me, what I, you know, we have shared service agreements with the village already. I would really like to have a shared services agreement with recreation. It it it's clean. Um, it shows the expectations about who's paying what. Um, it could outline, you know, uh, shared decision-making. Um, so I would just ask the committee to further discuss that, that particularly. That's my view.
We can't really do that until we know what rec looks like.
Yeah, exactly. We don't have, we don't have an agreement in writing, right? But with the other departments, we have that. And this is a lot of money. And remember, the floor, the floor item, that's going to go away in two years. That was a a four-year agreement. So, um, just I'm throwing that out there.
I mean, I I I I think if there's a re a reboot of the department, there's no way to do that and not come out of it with a shared service agreement. I mean, that's going to be automatic.
We agree with that.
I'm pretty proud that, you know, after years of debate about the pavilion floor and the town not contributing, that we finally came to an agreement and we, we did our due diligence and it was in good faith to say, okay, we should have, right? Um, so I'm proud that we were able to negotiate that with, with the village and that is in writing, right? So we're committed to that contract.
But I will, I will point out though, the lack of the shared service agreement with the village on rec is what's allowing us to play with the budget right now. So.
That's a good point.
Had that been in writing, we'd be on the hook.
Good point. Good point.
Can I?
Susan?
Can I just add that in terms of optics, you're talking about the village cutting their contribution because we're cutting ours. How is this going to look, um, with this money not being in the parks and rec? Um, section, then does that mean they're still going to cut theirs as well?
They can do the same thing we did if they want to.
Ho- hopefully that's been part of the discussions. I mean, I mean, this is, this hasn't been a secret. I mean, it sounds like it's on, it's up to them, really.
Yeah. And I also just want to add, um, in terms of the sales tax revenue, I know in your letter today, you put 832,000, but the actual sales tax allocation has to be 835,992 in order to balance the budget.
That's fine.
For DB, I just wanted to clear that.
Yeah, I'm sure I was off by some couple thousand or something, but yeah, I, I think whatever that number needs to be, that's what we're doing.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Susan. Um.
Alright, so I'm good. I'm good with that. I mean, I just, I think our message is important here that this uh, contingency item is added with the idea that it's earmarked for rec and it's incumbent on us. And again, this is not just on the recreation committee. You know, this, this thing is bigger than four people. We need the involvement of our boards. We need the involvement of the community. We're getting closer every day to when we're, we're ready to kind of open the floodgates here. Um, but it's incumbent on us. Again, not just as committee, but as boards to come up with a model that we're comfortable with that makes us all feel like that's money we're spending and is going to give us good return going forward.
Okay. So just, so I'm clear, I'm sorry, Karen.
I, I just have one, oh, sorry. I have one question.
Oh, Karen, did you want to say something? Piggybacking on Tim?
I just wanted to say I agree with Tim and, um, I'm okay with the, the plan in place as well. Go ahead, Bob.
I'm, I'm just curious, um, do, instead of using fund balance for, to make up that 32 in contingency, do we want to increase sales ta, sales revenue? For B to make up for that contingency? If we get it, great. If we don't get it, then at the end of the year, we go into fund balance should we need to spend it. But there is some room in anticipated, um, sales tax revenue. Just, just throwing it out there.
My position is I'd rather take it out of fund balance now because we don't know what the sales tax revenue for 2021 is going to be. And I'd rather, um, have it in there and show that it's coming out of fund balance. That's my position.
It's all going to work out the same in the end. If our sales tax revenue comes out ahead.
Right.
Then that goes right back into fund balance.
Right.
Sure, but, but it has, but it has us presenting a budget that's not using fund balance so heavily.
Right.
That's all. I mean.
If we add 32, 200, we'd be at. Susan, you said we were at 830, so would have put us up to 860, 865, 864, 865 somewhere.
Yeah. And that's still probably in the ballpark of $30,000 less than we will probably receive in 2020. Just saying.
Yeah, that would put us at 368, 193 for sales tax.
For that.
Yeah, it appears the number is going to be like 904 or somewhere in there.
For this year.
Correct.
I mean, I'm, you know, personally, I'm cautiously optimistic on this. Everybody I talked to, people, the only reason our sales tax numbers aren't better locally is people don't have the inventory to move. Terms of, you know, cars and, and that, and that, you know, that could change. And maybe once the all clear sounds, people are going to go travel and want to spend their money elsewhere, but
well.
Fingers crossed that we'll, we'll, we'll get there.
This is the first time the town of Canton's ever exceeded 900,000 on sales tax that I can recall. And this is, this is in a pandemic year.
Okay. So we need to make a decision. Do you want to take it out of fund balance? Or do you want us to, to jack up the sales tax in the budget? It sounds like people are saying increase the sales tax.
I'm good with increasing the tax.
Yeah.
See where our numbers fall and that it's going to give us time. By the time we, by the time we, uh, you know, are ready to say, are we going to trigger the 32,000 or part of it? And we're going to have some insight on some of our sales tax numbers through the end of this year and early part of next.
Well, it's Bob's that it ends up being the same thing in the end, you know, if, if you come up short with sales tax, it just will come out of fund balance anyway. This way you're presenting a balanced budget.
And that's always our goal. You know, we did, um, I did call the controller's office as to how we should show that. Um, when we submit to the county, if we do have to take things out of the fund balance, you saw the chart that I sent you. Um, it just shows as a summary, um, item that we're taking it out of there. But, um, you know, my fundamental belief is to always have a balanced budget. Okay. So it sounds like that's what we're going to do. We'll increase the sales tax, um, put that in a contingency, um, account and, um, go from there. So it sounds like we've made a couple of changes. The next step is, uh, we'll crunch numbers in the morning. We'll get that down to, to John. Uh, we'll spin out a preliminary budget, right? Now it will be called a preliminary budget and then that will be posted hopefully by Wednesday. Um, for a public hearing on the following Thursday. So, um, and who knows, there might be more changes after that as well. So, um, I, I want to thank the board for all the hard work. This, this was, this was a tough one, you know, and I think we, we've done our due diligence. It was very healthy and five people made the decisions. So I appreciate everybody. All your work. Jim, did you want to say something?
Yeah, that being said, I make the motion to approve the town of Canton overriding the tax cap.
I second it.
Any further discussion?
And just, I mean, so everybody knows that at the end of this discussion rate, right now, these numbers all play out the way we want them to. Uh, we are not exceeding that.
Right.
Unless, unless we hear something devastating in the next two weeks when we have our public hearing on the budget, then we should be fine and we'll be rescinding this motion.
Okay. So Heidi, we have, um, a motion and a second. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Just, just to clarify, I mean, so the budget we have it at, right at the 1,084,000, right at the tax gap level?
It will be.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? All right, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried. Okay. Very good. Um, having said that, we do need an executive session. Um.
And can we just remind everybody what our next steps are for our calendar first before we go into executive session?
Absolutely. So once we get the preliminary budget, it will be posted and sent to the board. Um, the public will be able to view it. And we have set up a public hearing, uh, on the budget for, um, Thursday, the 29th at 6:00 PM via Zoom. The agenda will go out with that information. The, the Zoom meeting has been set up. Um, the, the biggest turnaround as well is getting the legal notice in the paper. So, um, we have to meet the five day minimum, right? Um, and then we'll be working on that as well tomorrow. To answer your question, Tim?
Yep. So 29th is public hearing.
On the budget.
On the budget. And then we could adopt, we'll adopt probably that night. We have to do it the day after.
We have to have the public hearing prior to the day after election. Right? We have until November 20th to pass the budget.
Okay, okay. So we'll probably.
We could put the budget on the, um, November regular board meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, John, anything, uh, you want to add or say?
Thank you. We'll have that, our plan is to have that put together by tomorrow night.
Okay. Um, Susan, anything to add? No. Okay. Okay. So I need a motion to go into executive session for matters pertaining to, um, of a particular person.
Motion.
Motion second, second by Karen and it is 6:37. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, carried. Okay. So thanks, John and Susan and Heidi for, for coming. Um.
You're welcome.
Karen, you'll just take over. It's, okay.
So we're all set. Yeah, good night.
Good night, John. Thank you, Heidi.
Can you turn full host rights over to me, Heidi? Thank you.
You guys later.
Bye.
Okay. All right, we have 20 minutes.
Why?
Oh, there's just something I want to watch at seven. Oh, Tim, you're still muted. Jim, you're still muted.
We're still recording. We got to stop.
Oh.
Sorry, I thought that was already done.